It's seven o'clock, that's Fall Boarding, the regular meeting of the Albion City Council. It is Monday, November 16th, of the year 2020. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off, or we silence it. You will join me in a moment's silence. Please stand and join me in the presence of the House.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mingo, if you would please call roll.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Reed.
Smith.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
And Merritt.
Here.
May I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Public comments? Do we have public comments this evening, Chief?
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we said your name and...
Oh, okay, okay. Garrett Brown, 1016, South Spirit Street, Albion, Michigan. I was, one, I was gonna say the video was off, but it came on now, so I can see it. And then, I saw there was an item for, I guess, the city manager hiring process. I guess we'll see what the council's gonna do, but I do think that a search is a good thing to do. There was an issue that came up a couple of years ago, where a position was just given and wasn't even posted. And so I do think that it's always in the best interest of the public to do a search, and that's not a comment in any way detracting from our current interim manager, but I just think that that's a sound thing, so there really wasn't too much description on the agenda, so I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, 'cause I know the city did adopt a policy a couple of years ago requiring jobs to be posted. Now whether or not that applies to the manager job, I'm not sure, but I do think that, again, there needs to be a search, because that promotes fairness and transparency, and it gives the council and the public a chance to kind of weigh their options. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments this evening?
No.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we'll close the public comments, and we'll go into the consent, I'm sorry. Next up is the closed session. May I have a motion to adjourn, to go into closed session?
Support.
Okay. Mr. Mingo, would you please roll?
Councilmember Clark. Yes. Reed. Yes. Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer. Yes. Williamson.
Yes.
And Merritt.
Yes.
Okay. We adjourn, go into closed session.
Come on, you can't keep me out, Scott.
Chief, let me know when we go back live. Closed regular session, the city council meeting back to order. First item is item 10, consent calendar. Approval of regular session meetings, regular session minutes from November 2nd, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. First item for individual discussion is to approve a settlement agreement. May I have a motion? So moved. Support. Is there discussion? City Attorney.
So just obviously remind council, this is something we just discussed in our closed session, so, you know, we don't need to rehash the sections of it, but everyone's aware of what this is regarding, and our office recommends a good thing.
Any comments by councilman? Saying no, Mr. Mingo, would you please read your roll?
Councilmember Clark. Yes. Reed. Yes. Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer. Yes. Williamson.
Yes.
And Merritt.
Yes. Yay. Next item, discussion and approval of city manager search. May I have a motion?
Remove.
Support.
I want to conduct a discussion, while I'll turn it forward to Councilman Smith to request this be added to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. My fellow councilpersons, it is no secret that Albion's track record in the city manager position has been abysmal with us. Of the last three managers in Albion, one was pushed out by a toxic administration, one was allowed to resign and then later charged with serious contractions, and another one was allowed to just resign. This has caused the city much embarrassment and loss of respect by other municipalities, as well as many county and state agencies. This is not to mention a serious hemorrhaging of monies spent in searches, as well as the monies involved while courting candidates for the job. Without a doubt, this figure could be pushing well over $100,000. Add to all this the constant disruption in services and continuity of policy from one manager to the next. So here we are, once again, sitting with an interim city manager, filling in while the city council, duly elected representatives of the people, wonder where to go from here to finally put an end to this fiasco. Do we bring the service back to town? Do we have another ringmaster, charges tens of thousands of dollars to parade a number of unknowns across in front of us to choose from? Not knowing anything of these people, other than what is cleverly written on a piece of paper. Do we choose the dog and pony show, or the trapeze act? Would you prefer the fire breather, or the night throw? Or should we just choose from another bunch of clowns? All just because that's the way we've always done it. My fellow councilpersons, I say to you, it is time for a change. Change, that word we often hear but very rarely get to see anything of. Breaking the mold, going down another path, simply saying enough. Ladies and gentlemen, let us think of another way. Why not go with a proven track record that is on display day in and day out? Let us look to the young lady who, without experience in the city manager position, stepped in to negotiate not one, but three city employee union contracts, and saved us from costly and embarrassing litigation. Someone that was able to quickly take stock of our situation, and began filling two long empty positions to bring our city services back in line and on track. A person that, like another from the not-too-distant past, can start their city manager career in Albion and rise like a phoenix to burn through the negative anecdotes about Albion, and return us to a position of respect once again. Of course, I speak of none other than our own Ms. Haley Snyder. She has stood by in the shadows of two previous managers, watching and learning all the while. She saw what needed to be done, as well as what not to do. You must know that as an Albion native, her heart sank each time other managers let us down. I have no doubt that Ms. Snyder has Albion's best interests at heart, because this is her town as well, as they say, she has skin in the game. She has the education necessary for the position, as well as the proven ability. Keep in mind that Haley was one of the coveted final four in the last search, and was passed by for someone that had 30 years of experience. The rest are gone. She is still here. This is her home. She isn't using us to better the cross for a better-paying position, when a better-paying position comes around. We are not a professional stepping stone for her. We are her hope for a better future, and she is ours. Keep in mind as well, by avoiding the tedium and time of a search with no assurance of the outcome, not to mention the tens of thousands of dollars laid out again without guarantee or return. Monies that could be used as a salary of an executive assistant to the city manager, knowing that the correct hire in that position would garner a winning team for Albion. Listening to the residents of Albion, I hear much praise for this young woman of our city from all walks and all levels. She is genuinely appreciated and trusted by the city as citizens of Albion. No monetary value can be placed on that level of character. So in the names of the very large number of citizens and at their behest, I, House Smith, 3rd precinct councilman, do recommend that Ms. Haley Snyder be elevated to the full position of city manager for the city of Albion, with all of the rights and responsibilities involved with that promotion. It is my sincere belief that we could not do better. House Smith, 3rd precinct council representative, city of Albion, thank you for your time.
Same comments. Questions back out. The answer will be...
So I truly appreciate Councilmember Smith's thoughts and work, and his recommendation, and bringing forth the identity of the manager search. I was on the committee, the subcommittee of council. Councilperson Clark and Councilperson Reed also served with me when we were figuring out the interim recommendation. One of the recommendations that came from that committee was that we would revisit this subject matter after the election, after the first of the year. That was intentional, because it would give those who were either reelected, or the newly-elected council people, the opportunity to work with Ms. Snyder, and then develop a process for either negotiating what Ms. Snyder's future is as city manager, or instituting a search process. But it was really recommended from that committee that this be done with the new council, starting after December 7th. And I truly feel many of the same things that Councilperson Smith is bringing up about Ms. Snyder and her performance, but I would suggest that we table this until after the new council takes its seat, for them to be able to decide how they would like to move this process forward.
So we're making a motion to table?
I'd say this is what I would like to do, if someone would like to make the motion again.
Do we have councilmember have comments before we... These are for comments, I think couples would like to make comments. Councilwoman, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly appreciate Acting City Manager Snyder, her experience, her work effort, and I have no reason to doubt that she would make an excellent Albion city manager, given the fact that she's grown up here, she knows the people. She's seen, she's been at the city hall for a while, she's seen the companies going. She's seen things that she'd like to have approved, or she'd like to improve, make improvements, and just kind of had a front seat to what's going on. So I think that she would be an excellent city manager. How, I don't, I think I tend to agree with Councilwoman Williamson. I don't think it's this council, at this point in time, it's place to decide that today. I think the new administration is gonna be taking place in two weeks. That's, it's a major deal, and I think that they should be given the time and experience to work with, get to know city manager Haley. I'm sure they will be impressed as well. So I think I'm going to say that, I mean, I said all that to say, I too would like to see us hold off on this decision right now. I think Senator Snyder is doing an excellent job, and she will continue to. And it will only, the length of time, will only add to her experience and knowledge, and she will be better as a result of us waiting. She will gain much more experience, and be, yeah, be just that better than her ability to do the job. So I would say, I would tend to agree that we should probably table this matter until a future, or at some point in the future. Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed. I'd like to, by the way.
Yes, yes, I do, I do. And I have enjoyed working with Haley. I know she's run fantastic job, and I agree with that. I don't know if, I don't know what the ones coming in, if they don't know her, they don't know how she's, how she's worked with us, how she is, but I don't know, whether you take her or not, I feel that she would be the choice to have.
Councilmember Clark, do you have comments?
So I agree with everything that's been said all the way around, but we did make a, we did meet on this and come to an agreement of how we wanted to press, to afford with this process. And one thing I want to see, and have tried to be a part of, is ability and us saying, and being people of our word, because that's what the city is wanting to see from us. So I make a motion that it be tabled until after the, sometime in 2021? It is not scheduled. And then we can move forward from there.
Support, do you want to agree?
I hope we don't carry this on too far, though, because I would like to have, to see us get an assistant city manager, or someone who can write grants and give Haley time, where she can get things that she needs to get done, but still things that will progress the city, get that done. So I would not want to go far into the year without getting this taken care of.
Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, I just wanted to add, I think that the city manager has, currently has a job posting for an assistant. Yeah. She's a helper, so I think that she will have a necessary assistant, and that she can continue to do the, get attention to the major things that the city, that needs to be focused on, and someone else can do the minutia and help assist her. So I think, I think she's put herself in a good position to, you know, continue in this position, and then you have Haley, and it's only gonna make her better in the future. Thank you.
I support the motion.
Well, you weren't recognized, and we were in the middle of discussing, so Councilman Smith.
Oh, I was gonna say, there was a...
Do you have an issue with that?
Well, it's just part of the procedure, and there's a motion and a support, it's time to...
You weren't recognized, so go ahead, Councilman Smith.
Okay. I was just gonna say, there was a motion on the floor, and I did hear a second. That should be legal.
Okay. Moving to seconded, Mr. Mingo, please call roll.
Councilmember... What have you voted on?
We're voting whether or not to table this issue.
A yes table sit for a future discussion, and a no means what it said. Do we go back on it tonight?
No, we go back into discussion about it.
Okay. A yes means table, and a no means we continue to discuss. Councilmember Reed. No. Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Marcola.
Yes, this is to table, right? Okay, yes, yes.
Spicer.
Where are you?
Yes. Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
And Merritt.
Yes. Who's side is this table?
I just would like to say thank you to all members of council for the kind words, and it's great to be here, thank you.
Next item, C, request approval of resolution 2020,54, to exempt the city of Albion from the requirements of the Michigan Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act from January 1st, 2021, through December 3rd, verse 20, 21. May I have a motion? So moved. Support. Support. Do you wish to give us a overview on this? City manager, or the attorney? The attorney.
Okay. So the council's aware, every year, we need to opt out of the requirements of the publicly funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, because the city elects to do a 9 to 10 split, and the statute is for an 80/20, and so in order to continue to do the 9 to 10, we need to adopt this resolution each year for the next January 1st through December 3rd.
Any questions back out? Speaker, would you please do your roll?
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Merritt.
Okay, item D, discussion approval of newly-elected councilmembers participating in the 2021 budget study session. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support? Okay. I ask this to be placed on here. I would... I was frustrated coming in as the mayor after the last election, I was complaining election, not be able to fully participate and ask questions. So I think it's appropriate to let the incoming council participate in the budget study session. There's still participants and ask questions, we're not voting on the budget at that point. So I will hope that my colleagues will support that. Any other comments or questions by council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Last item, discussion of tree services updated.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Director Miller, Superintendent Riddle and Rusty Hall back last Monday, November 9th to discuss tree services now that the contract has been finalized and signed by all parties. They have decided that they will go through and start to remove any trees that are classified as dangerous. Um, so Superintendent Riddle is in the process of compiling the list of dangerous trees and Director Miller will be reviewing that and scheduling those trees to be serviced by Mr. Hall.
So moved.
Councilman Smith? Thank you, Mayor. Uh, would there be any way of notifying the residents of those properties where the tree appears?
Oh, yes, absolutely, before any tree work has started, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Director Miller will review the list and make the proper notifications.
Well, city attorney, your question for you. So through, and the city identifies dangerous trees, trees that need to be removed. And, uh, we've had some pretty heavy events here this last few days. To say between the time that is identified, writing that the, the city's identified a tree is a hazard, needs to be removed, falls on somebody's property, is the city liable? Since we are aware now that there is a health and safety issue.
Not necessarily, I mean, we still have, uh, we're, we're still covered by the governmental immunity statute. And obviously a situation like that might give a plaintiff, you know, I don't want to say this so strongly, but stand out, but angle it come at. But, um, when, you know, when a tree falls over because of, like you said, a storm or heavy wind, it tends to be an act of God. And so it's not necessarily, um, just the poor condition of the trees, you know, contribution of weather factors and whatnot. So I, my opinion would be, would still be covered by governmental immunity in that situation. Particularly since we're making the rounds trying to address the trees that need to be addressed.
All right. Any other questions by council? We'll open it up for public comments, three minutes.
Future agenda items.
Thank you. Okay, we have future agenda items. Seeing none, public comments?
Commissioner Tompkins is going on in a second.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor Tompkins. Or is it muted here? Leave your move muted, Commissioner.
I promoted him to panelists so he could talk and then you disappear. And he did want to talk, so.
Give me this time, can you talk for me?
I don't get it, I have to hand it up, so. Oh, here he is there.
There we are, can you hear me? All right, sorry about that, folks, uh, having all kinds of technical difficulties this evening. Uh, first and foremost, good evening, everybody. Gary Tompkins, York County Commissioner. Great to see everybody in a virtual format, uh, unfortunately. Hopefully at some point we'll get the chance to see each other at some point in time. Uh, first and foremost, I just want to take real brief and say I'm absolutely humbled, honored. And, uh, it's certainly a privilege to continue to represent, uh, not only the 7th district, but certainly the city of Albion as your county commissioner moving forward. So, uh, certainly look forward to, uh, continuing the work on certainly on behalf of the city of Albion residents, uh, to, uh, to work on that behalf. And just want to take another opportunity to congratulate, uh, Ms. Snyder, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Lanu to your, uh, election on city council as well as Ms. Lawler and Ms. Clark on your reelection to city council. And then most, uh, also as well, very much a sincere thank you to Mayor Atchison and Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Spicer for your service to the city of Albion and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Uh, one of the things that I always say when you have the, uh, when you, it's, it's tough to put your name on the ballot and then go through the process, but I certainly commend each and every, every person who has that willingness to put their name on the ballot and, uh, and to forge forward with the ideals and principles that they believe in. And I certainly think that each and every one of you are in fact a winner and there really is no truly little loser. So again, congratulations to each and every one of you, uh, certainly. And like I said, I hope to get an opportunity to, uh, to see everybody in person again very soon. Um, and quite frankly, I'm going to leave it at that tonight. And again, I just want to say that I'm extremely humbled, honored and privileged to continue to represent you folks, uh, moving forward as your county commissioner. So each of you have a great evening, stay safe and hopefully we're going to get through this together and I'll see each, each one of you very soon. Thank you very much.
Any other comments, public comments tonight, Chief? No, thank you. And we'll move on to the city managers' report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a brief update. With the increase of COVID cases in Allen County, we have made some adjustments to signal operations. Effective today, Monday, November 16th, city hall will be open to the public from Monday, Monday through Friday, from 10:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. However, with Governor Webber's recent, um, emergency orders released yesterday evening, uh, we will, you will see reduction of staff here at city hall if you do step in to handle your business in person. We will be looking to either rotational or flexible shift down in our main front office. Um, with that being said, then we are strongly encouraging our residents to utilize our online payment option as well as the, um, drop box upfront. Um, if you need to handle any business outside of that main front window and downstairs, you do need to call ahead of time and schedule an appointment. So we are just encouraging our employees to, um, work remotely if you have the capability to do that. We have recently, um, rolled out a temporary telework policy which is under requirement with COVID. So we do have that in place. As a reminder, to remind everyone, the first, second, third Hartwell and Wild Street Improvement Project, their open house will be this Thursday, November 19th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. That will be, um, a teleconference. The call in number has been posted on the city's website. Um, letters have been also dropped off to all of the residents that will be impacted by this, um, road project. So we encourage those residents to, um, call in and to learn about what that project will entail. I also want to remind council that we have the joint study session with the Albion EDC, DDA, and Chamber this Wednesday, November 18th at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom webinar. Though, um, that notice was sent out last week, I can resend Zoom notice if you do need that. And then just a final reminder, we have the 2021 budget study session with Saturday, November 21st at 9:00 a.m. And that will also be held via Zoom webinar. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Mayor, Councilmember's comments.
Saturday, please, so. Saturday?
Yes.
Yes, it's at 9:00 a.m. and we're doing it virtually.
Councilmember.
Thank you, city manager Snyder, did you already or someone already sent out the notice? We got you the Saturday meeting for the.
We have not.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Will be sent out Wednesday, so.
Okay, I'm just going to say, I didn't have it, you did, but thank you.
Not yet.
Councilmember Clark? Okay. Uh, everyone mentioned that Lewis Chapel. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make this announcement and then I'll turn it back over to you. So Lewis Chapel and church is celebrating their 103rd year church anniversary on Sunday, November 22nd at 11:00 a.m. It'll be on Zoom and Facebook Live. The Zoom ID is 885-5927-8833. Uh, new pastor, Pastor Selena Hayes is the 32nd pastor and the first willing pastor of Lewis Chapel. And Pastor Donald Phelps, the former pastor, will be the speaker for the occasion. The community is invited to attend that. Ms. Clark?
I just wondered what pastor might happen. I'd like to say I enjoy working with you, Mayor, and Al, and Ms. Spicer. I appreciate your patience with me as I was learning. And each one of you have taught me some valuable things within conversations and just listening as, um, you were sat in your seats. And, um, don't think I won't hesitate to call you if I think about something like that in the future just to get your opinions on something like very soon. But again, I appreciate your help.
Councilmember Clark?
You know what, I'm going to decline it to come in. I don't want to get such a beautiful remark, I'm going to leave it at that in positive light, thank you.
Councilwoman Lawler, do you have any comments? Okay?
No, thank you.
And motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote.